For the construction, that additional ten thousand five hundred is to assist the construction, or if it's awarded to someone else?
No, just depending on which format we go with, and there are a couple of avenues you can pursue. If we go, need to go to an RFQ, RFP process where we go to competitive tender for different general contractors actually do the work. There's two ways of doing it. You can do a one-step or two-step process. It's all about timelines and considering, again, we're having some pretty significant damages happening, I'll try and expedite as quickly as possible, and it's not a large scope of work compared to a huge, large facility with a, like renovating the entire courthouse. So, the RFQ, the one-step, two-step process is you submit in for impressive qualifications, submit that out publicly, and it needs to be advertised for two weeks. General contractors generally then turn in, okay, I think I'm qualified, they actually, and we provide a scoring matrix to make sure that when they, when they provide their tenders, we will look at their qualifications based on the experience level. We will then do a scoring matrix to do that, we'll then present to Commissioner's Court over who we think would be the top three that we think that we should then talk to, to request the proposal for actual to do the work itself and provide pricing.
And that, that's that ten thousand five hundred dollar fee if it gets to that point? Okay.
It's quite, it's quite, it's quite a, an involved process because we create that scoring matrix that we have, and then we do interviews in two phases. Then if we did the one-step process, the RFQ, the qualifications and proposals, we give them one, so that'll, which saves a little bit of time. And in this case, that's why we'd do it if we went that route. But then we do the same thing again then based on the proposals they provide, that has a monetary value to it based on the scope of work that we're doing.
Okay.
So we do another score matrix again based on that, and then we come back to Commissioner's Court and say, I think we should use this general contractor.
Okay, and one of the questions that I had sent is the timeline, and if, is the county going to be bound to participate in all these phases? In other words, if, if they want someone else to, to help with the construction part, I just want to know what the commitment is from the county based on this agreement?
Depending on...
Uh, through the, all the phases?
Oh, um...
Like how much we should be involved in those different phases?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean...
So I think the timeline of the assessment, so...
Okay.
You're asking like how long?
Do you mean in terms of if you decide to pull out and say, we don't want to do this work?
Yes.
Oh, well, you only bound us to the phase that we're at.
Okay.
If you decide, you know, if you get the drawings down, you decide, uh, we don't want to do this work, we'll do something else.
Okay.
We stop there.
And, and I, I believe the other question was a timeline. Do you have a, an estimate?
I think I put one briefly in there, I gave you a rough outline, I think that...
I'm sorry, I didn't.
On the description, I think.
Four weeks?
No, eight, nine, four. I think, I gave those, timeline for each of the phases.
Oh, I see four weeks, wow, maybe I missed that.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm thinking...
Ten visits?
The first scope of work, the existing measure, I think, and what I tried to, I tried to give many weeks, but I tried to give how many estimated meetings I think that we need to, we need to provide, just to experience, because we'll be involved with the Texas Historical Commission, and so we'll probably go to Austin at least once, generally we go to Austin, once, just when we provided ideas on how we think the problems given, the solution, got different options of, of how we could repair, fix, we then go to Austin, you know, they like to be presented sort of in their office.
Page two, number five, has eight weeks.
Yeah.
If you go to the phase down there. Yeah, so I've got eight weeks on the...
Oh, okay, I see that. I see the visits, but, okay.
And I've gone through a timeline then for each of it, which should probably hold a little bit helpful. And then talk about the six meetings we've had during the coordination, general contract of the work that's in category eight for their renovation, and just so I try to give a bit of a, sort of a real, sort of, old age timeline of how I see the project sort of panning out.
Mm-hmm.
And it, I, when Brendan and I were talking, there may be another option that we could do, maybe next time.
That's on, yes, it's the second, you know, your support discussion.
We discussed that a little bit further, but, so I'm trying to cover everything from the, the process, we've done this, I'd say probably sixteen, seventeen times, I think, over time. It's a, it's a pretty simple process, it just takes time, as you go to, go to, go to some of the, you know, public offering, it's just, it's just waiting for the due process of the weeks that we have. The, I think that the process should work pretty smoothly. Looking at the project and what you've got, with some of the spalling that's been happening, I really think, oh, the Audi rate is still a better, a better route for the, for the county. It's just that you have a cap on it, and if we come under that time, then you save the money rather than the fixed rate, I think it just makes it more sense for the county, for, you know, the company to practice, I think it makes more sense. My only concern with the, the true concerns I have is, I think those porticoes that we have established there, we've really got, I think everything is pretty filled up, it's like a little bathtub on the top of both, and I think there's probably got jackup leaks, which is why it's suddenly leaking into that structure itself. So I, I would like my first renovation, because they're not original to the building anyway, is to take off that bad straight, it doesn't do anything, keep the portico as it is, and then basically fill in so we can almost have like a mini roof on the top of that portico, so then we won't have any more penetration coming through into that structure from the inside. The tricky bit with that's going to be is, I think a lot of that was cast in place, so I think what we're gonna have to do is cut most of that off, the freeze work, all the detail work on the other side, and so that's why I need to see what the historical commission will sort of allow us to do. This one, my thought process, couple of options would be to create that same sort of formwork in maybe fiberglass, or maybe more material, it'll be lighter, and we won't have that problem anymore. I don't think it will anyway, but it's three foot, the roof on the top, and we, we seal it, I don't think we'll get any more intrusion. My big concern is, moisture's already in that structure, and you can see the rust that's already happened, that's gonna continue to happen, because you, you can't stop it, it's gonna continue rusting on the inside, no matter you try and paint it out, it's gonna continue to bleed through. So, we'll need to do a little bit more additive work. When we first did the original renovation of courthouse and we fixed the foundation, there's a couple of folks I'd like to bring in, some geotechnical, some materials testing folks to find out how we best deal with that, to stop, even if we do the fix, we really want to, to stop that rusting from the interior, so I need to get with some materials testing companies on that, and come up with a strategy of how we, once you fix it, it's done. So that's gonna be a little tricky, just seeing the way that it was cast. I've got a cast stone company in San Antonio who uses quite a bit. I'm gonna get them out here as well to look at how we can do that. I just go do a bit more exploratory work from the top side, from the inside, to see how they actually built that, whether it was all cast in place, some sections were individually laid, I'll do a bit more investigative work to find out the best way to deal with that.
So, uh, one of the questions I have is, I don't really see in page, in option one...
Yes.
So does, does that equate any, in all of your subconsultants, to not exceed?
No, no, we, we just call them, we just...
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't...
We call them, I always suggest that we do an option two. Yeah, no, I don't, we're just the, just the architectural proposal on that. I need to, I need to get, we'll coordinate with them and get pricing from them, but to be honest, I don't, I don't think on their part it's gonna be a huge amount of work, once you get a solution, go forward. I don't think it's gonna be a huge amount.
So, on, on page four, paragraph one, two, three, four, five, these will be provided by each consultant, I, I object to that word, we, we do not be a professional services, so that's gotta be changed, you put pricing or estimates or something, but that word is about to be changed.
By that, I, I, I mean, they'll, I'll...
I, I know what you mean, I know what you mean. But that, that, that is a bad word in that context.
You said page four, where, sir?
Uh, paragraph down, the second sentence, it says, all other consultants such as the...
I don't care.
The, the next sentence, it's provided.
I should use the proposal, yeah, proposal.
It was a proposal, wait, yeah, because we, you know what they're still...
That's awesome.
And, uh, down towards the bottom, on, on your invoices, one of my comments was, was as long as we receive your invoices and time to be processed through, obviously they'll be paid on time, I'd like to see that added in here somewhere.
Okay.
It was, I don't remember what I gave you this year on...
I, I think that I did notify, Mr. Thorn of the Commissioner's Court process for bill on the second floor of my day.
Yeah, and I think I just...
I think that standard language that you're comparing to me told me that we were high form and that we would not pay like these, assuming that we...
Yes. And I, I think I amended that as well, so I, I don't, I've got no problem with that. I don't want to change it around what you told me.
Mr. Thorn, a question that was posed to me.
On page four, very bottom, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, but it says...
To be paid in full within ten days from the date of the food commissioner's court hearing.
Well, but that's, they're gonna be paid within ten days, that's us paying them within ten days, which is, which is fine.
Right.
After it's in the court.
But it's turned in on time to be processed by you all, to be put on the...
Right, but it wouldn't be presented to you guys in court if I didn't have it, so if I get it, then it's...
Well, that, that was my point, he's gonna turn it in on time, he can't turn it in on Friday at five o'clock and expect it to be paid.
Yeah.
My job, so that, that's, that's why I think we have that word.
There...
Like, can we do with everybody else?
Yeah, well, usually the cutoff is Wednesday prior to the Commissioner's Court meeting, so.
Yeah.
Well, it just, someone approached me about, we just repaired the courthouse, and, and so why are we looking at having to do something again? And I go, I was not on the court at the time that what you're talking about happened, and I don't know what the scope of work was at that time, or what they saw that needed to be fixed, so, you know, I'm not gonna speculate, I'll let you tell us why this is happening now, why it wasn't maybe caught before, and of course, I very heard the bathtubs, you know, i- i- if the drain gets clogged and the water can't go anywhere, the water's gonna find somewhere to go, and it sounds like that's what...
I think that's what's happening. So, originally we called in, I guess it must have been about fifteen years ago originally, the wall just outside the judge's office on that side was actually bowing in two directions, it was actually bowing out and vertically as well as horizontally, so we didn't know, sorry, move this, sorry. Um, my wife doesn't, um, we also have to try and find out what the problem was. What, this courthouse was one of three that was built by a quarry twenty miles from here, but actually when they built the final courthouse, they did cons, they did this one, I can't remember the other one, but they, the architect actually shut the quarry down because the bricks were so bad, they were so, they were so, so poor, there was no compressive rating. When we actually, we came up with the concept of figuring out how bad the brick was, we actually dug trenches down those over here, if you remember, the big old trenches around. I could actually, I got down in it, just beneath a foot trench, I put my fist on the outside of the wall, and these walls are four lengths, or four, four bricks thick, and I could push my hands all the way through and grab the earth on the other side, that's how bad the bricks were. That's the reason why originally it wasn't meant to be stuccoed, but they had a stucco to just try and keep the whole building together. So over time, it's going to settle, it's going to, the bricks will not, they will not hold themselves up forever. And like, so that's the original idea, we came in to do that, we replaced a whole one side, we did the windows on that one side, we built the walls, and then we went around and replaced all the foundation footing all the way around, and we took it out, and I think, I think there were four foot or five foot sections, almost like bad teeth. We took a section, we took four feet out, left four feet, took another four feet out, left four feet, we poured new sections in with rebar, which we did that once, we came back and did it again and took out the remaining bad sections, so you have a, your footings are great. One of the reasons we found that the brick had been compromised is there was an old sewer line that ran right alongside the building that had failed, and then we found two subsequent sewer lines that ran right about it, and I think over time, it had just made that brick into like a mush, which is, and also the footing it was on was about that thick, and it was just a little bit of cement, a little bit of water, just stuff they had slightly threw in, the whole building was sitting on, was sitting on the foundation about that thick, about that thick. So, fixed all that, and for the most part, then it was pretty good. We knew again over time it probably would start, some of the cracks would start to come back, just because settlement, settlement over time, the courthouse being used, it's just that, it's just time, it's been thirteen years, and the whole structure as a whole isn't the greatest, and it's, it's just, it starts past the golden gate bridge, we start one, then you finish on the other, you gotta start painting again, but it's just the structure, it's just a, it was just a poorly built structure to start with the materials they had. Everything inside's great, but just, when you've got the walls, the low bearing walls that aren't made of the, you know, of the, the correct compressor structural material, over time it's just gonna settle and it's gonna need to be reworked again. And I just, at the time the porticoes were fine, nothing wrong with them, the corbels on some of the windows, they were, we checked them all, they were fine, it's just I think when you've got a little bit of movement in the structure itself over time, and contractions, expansion with, with rain and freeze thaw and heat, I think that's why some of those, those keystones have started to come loose. Fortunately, this can be something, I think it's gonna be chased for a little while yet, but, that's what we're back again.
So, are you looking at these windows on the west side?
We'll look at them, yeah. For the moment, we just, we're dealing with emergency management, money's from the, from the state, we're looking at the areas that we really have to deal with right now, we'll look at the front door, we've got that.
Well, by no, but I mean, there's a keystone missing from one of these windows.
Yeah, we'll look at those too.
Yes, I mean, to me, that's a mercy, that, I mean, without keystone, that thing, that will...
Anything that I see, that I think needs to be addressed, you know, in terms of needs to be fixed, I'll put that on the list, we need to look at doing.
Should that be added to the scope here on first page, top one?
Well, yeah, we can do that, I mean, I can do that, but there'll be other things I know that'll be fine, you know, like seatbelt free corbels, by me, something that may need to be done. I think, at some time in the future, maybe more of a broader scope at some point, likely some interior walls, because my fear is that some of the footings on the, they have like two bridge walls broken here, this one, and towards the front of the building, I think they just made the same, on the same footing that ran through the building was on the outside, and so there's been some cracking on the inside and actually offices downstairs on the second floor, that some point in time will need to be, will need to be fixed as well, just with, how far we're going with the scope of work, but for the moment, I think it needs to be made safe, and then anything I see that I think needs to handle this, I think we should at least note it and say, well, maybe we can address this in a few more years' time, it's not immediate right now, but I think an evaluation on the structure at some point in time over the next year or so probably needs to be done, just on some interior walls, so cracking and things like that.
This Thorn, after this last rain, we did discover another huge problem down here at that corner by where the clerk's offices are at downstairs.
Yes.
Somehow the water's getting through the wall, it went in through the paint, and then it erupted into a stream, and we're real concerned, the records are down there, it didn't flood, but it was a steady stream of water, and I can't figure out where it actually come from.
We'll look at that, we'll look at that, yeah. Was that this weekend?
It was last week.
Last week?
When the la- last big rain.
The big storm, yeah, I think there's, no, we can look at that.
But the same thing happened one year ago or last year, yeah, but, but those commissioner also, that attributed to the drains being plugged on the bottom, so once we got those cleared out, well, over here we're okay, but that's a problem because the stairwell's filled up with water.
Yeah, and it's not good. I think as well looking at the building, like, went around the other week, I think when you put a maintenance program into place to make sure that all the contestant spreads are cleared out, like, I noticed there was a bunch of debris that was in this corner right here, that, when, when we did, we put French drain around the project, but we really want to get everything away from the building as much as we possibly can, just so we try and try not to have anything sitting up against the, the walls as much as we can, to get everything away from the building.
So the work we're looking at doing now, is it a redo on the work that was done thirteen, fifteen years ago, or this is completely different?
Totally different scope.
Okay.
Okay, so just, is there any other questions, Mr. Thorn? So aside from the changes that have been brought up by the court that need to be done, I guess the court has to pick either one of the options, correct?
So we're taking option one, that was presented the other day, actually, um, do you find yourself as a company having major cost overruns? Do you, do you miss your mark usually on...
No, I, I think the only thing that's the, the variable is giving state...
Understood.
And so I think our product of two, which is two ideas together for fixing the, the portico damage immediately, I'll give an example, I'm not sure if you can, one of those, but, it's, it's getting into, we try to be as succinct as we can with what we're trying to propose, but, for example, when we were, we were stripping the windows back, we made the windows on, on the side over here, you know, we got down to the blue or the white, the paint, threw about twenty odd layers of paint, we got down to the bottom, and we must have gone back and forth for like three or four days, actual physical days, never mind over about a period of about two weeks, over what color we painted the windows, what they wanted, the original window paint color, and I said, well, it's so thin, you scratch off, you couldn't tell which one was one to the other, and so it's timelines like that that can just allay a little bit, and we're waiting for a third party to give us an answer, I know the answer I want to give, but when waiting for someone that's providing half the money, it's just difficult to predict what their, what their format's gonna be. We've had a lot of experience with THC, I think if you come in, you know, with a, with a clear idea of what you want to do and that you've got a reasonable argument for it, I, I, they're, they're, they're pretty good to deal with, but they, they have much less of a, a body of reviewers than they used to have, and so they've had to cut their numbers back quite a bit, and depending on their workload, I don't know, that being said, that's been sort of an emergency situation, to get this fixed, I think they will be more proactive than they, than they have been in the past.
Go to the top of the line. Couldn't hear you, man.
Yes, so I just wanted to provide you more information, or just remind you in full transparency, we have not been officially awarded funds from the Texas Historical Commission for these repairs, right? So, and I am not one hundred percent confident that we are going to be able to meet their deadline for emergency funding cycle, because the THC meets quarterly, their next quarterly, and they meet during a, a week period, is July thirty first through August, and, and this was directly from Ms. Elgato at the THC. Because in her email, she states that out of cycle for emergency requests must have been received by June sixth to be included on their agenda for their quarterly meeting that's going to be happening in Amarillo. So I need to put a phone call into her today, because we may have missed that window, and so if that's the case, we will have to apply for regular funding when they come out with their cycle fourteen, which is the regular funding stream that comes out in, in October, which is competitive bidding, or competitive grant. So I will reach out to Ms. Elgato today pending your decision, and, and inform her that we have the processes of having to, you know, come through Commissioner's Court, and, and the time that it's taken to coordinate all of this, and hope that she will grant us a variance and, and get added to their agenda for their quarterly meeting, but I just wanted to make the court aware, that that's where we're at. In addition, I did want to tell you, or read to you, her, her email to me, a portion of it, where she mentions Mr. Thorn's estimate along with the building assessment, including both the narrative and photos, so her and her staff came and took a bunch of photos, which she provided me, must be included in the out of cycle request. Please note that expenses incurred prior to the award date are not eligible for reimbursement, and it is up to the county to determine the appropriate delivery method, in this case, given the scope of the project, the Kaler Company's familiarity with the building, the county may consider using job order contract, which is the next agenda item, but she does state that in the meantime, the affected entryways must be properly shored up, and safety tape should be installed around the perimeter to restrict access, only the entry that remains in good condition should be used. Their next quarterly, commission quarterly meeting is July thirty first through August first, and their next, uh, regular funding competitive cycle begins, I believe, in October.
I'm sure they have to do their due diligence ahead of their meeting to be able to be prepared for it, but having a cutoff of June fifth for a July thirty first meeting makes it very hard.
She did mention that there is a chance that there will be emergency cycle funding in October, at their October quarterly meeting, but she won't know that until she has that discussion with her division director, but I will, judging I, you have time, we can make a, a call to her. She did state in her email, since foundation and structural work was performed during the THCPP round thirteen, the county is required to contact consultants involved in that phase of the project, which were Lindsay Thorn Architect and the Kaler Company. She did mention, if after consulting the original architect and engineering firm, the county chooses to engage other consultants, she did list for other consultants for structural assessments, so we're just doing our due diligence in what she requested.
But if we don't receive any funding from them, we're not bound to that?
We are, we are, so if you approve for the structural assessment, the county is bound to pay for the structural assessment.
No, no, I meant to using those two individual, using Thorn and using Kaler Company.
Yeah, no, we are not bound to, bound to, it, it's, she's stating, if you chose today that you don't want to accept Mr. Thorn's proposal, then we could go out and seek the services of other architects and engineering services. But if we pay for it, it would be in this current fiscal year's budget, and no guarantee that we're gonna have the funding, but we do know that it's a need, so we would either have to budget for the repairs if we don't get the funding from THC to move forward, so I just want to make sure the court is aware of that.
We can't wait?
We can't wait, guys.
I, I mean...
We got a problem. Okay, any other questions? All right, so now we need to either entertain a motion for what options you all want to decide. I'll make a motion to approve the court, the contract, or, shoot, I'll make a motion to approve the county judge's expedient contract with Thorn Architects under option one, with the changes of adding the windows to the scope of the project, and changing the word bids on page four.
Second.
And that's the one for not to exceed sixty dollars.
It's five thousand dollars.
Okay, all right, but we're picking option one, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is it under option two?
No.
Got it, okay, all right. Motion made by Commissioner Mark, you have a second?
Commissioner Aiken seconded it.
All right. Discussion on dead item three A. Here none, call for the vote, all votes voted aye.
Aye.
Vote against. I say that motion passes. We go to three D, discuss and take action on approval of the job order contracting method of constructing using the Kaler Company as suggested by the Texas Historical Commission under government code chapter two, two, six, nine, sixty-four, one.
Yes, so I, in my conversation with, with Ms. Elgato from THC, I did clearly ask her, I said, once Mr., Mr. Thorn drafts the estimate, will we be required to go out for bid for a general contractor? I said, once Mr. uh, Mr. Thorne drafts the estimate, will we be required to go out for bid for a general contractor? Um or do we use the Kaler Company since they did the last work? Because I was uncertain, I didn't fully understand what she meant when she stated that we had to contact both the Thorne Company and Kaler. And so um that's when she responded and her response says, um. In this case, given the scope of the project and the Kaler's companies familiarity with the building, the county may consider using job order contracting as a suitable option. So then I went and I pulled the statute, I forwarded it to our county attorney's office, um in which uh Mr. Thorne reviewed it and responded to me that we are not required to go, uh to bid out this service, um assuming that uh the Kaler Company has shown competence and qualifications and I'll let this.
Correct, it's not required. There just has to be showing that the company is, is qualified and um has experience in doing this. Um and uh that would be sufficient. It's not just some fly by night that, um, uh but no, it's a qualified, reputable company, which I believe it is, so.
Yeah, and I certainly don't, I'm not opposed to going out for bid for a general contractor. I, I believe, um in our conversations with THC, it was um because of the emergent need of what's happening right now and the process and the timeliness of what it takes to go out for bid for a general contractor. As you know, we've done it for Emergency Operations Center and for the Expo Arena and down time process. It may be that we have missed the both on the out of cycle emergency funding. I, I won't know that until today. Um and that job order contracting may not even apply if we aren't eligible to apply for the emergency out of cycle funding anyway. Um which then would give us more time. But because it is an emergency situation as defined by Ms. Elgato. Um and if we are eligible to apply, that's why she's recommending that we do the job order contracting method um in order to prevent any further delay of the repair.
Can I speak?
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Thorne, okay.
I worked with the Kaler Company for, I've known them for a long, I've known anybody in Sancho almost thirty years. Um I've s- I did speak with them previously. We, we talked on different points just quite a bit. Uh they have the existing superintendent that did the project recently. He still works for the company. Um so I, there, there's no one better than the Kaler Company. So I just wanna put that in. Worked with them many, many years, a lot of experience with them. Fortunately, Charlie's no longer with us, the owner, uh the owner, but um they've got great people at the helm and I think that they do a great job for the, for the county.
So I'm having a little trouble understanding why we need to do this like today right now, since there are a lot of open ended questions. Seems like we have eight weeks before we need a contractor. I mean, uh if we're not gonna get the funds, then this is all for naught, so.
I, I don't know if there is.
Yeah, I think, I think sometimes it helps um with the formulation of the strategy for the repair.
I, I don't, I don't disagree, but I mean, if we get the answer today or tomorrow that we're not eligible for the funding, then we're going down a different path, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
And so, I mean, we got, we got work to the week and I don't know, personally, I would rather wait till we end and have more information to, to. I, I have no objection to, to doing it this way. In fact, it's, it's probably, it might be really cheaper in the long run overall. But uh since we don't know what we're doing yet and if we're not gonna get the money, then we're gonna have to rethink this.
And, and you don't need an answer to, uh, I have number two to move forward with your, your process, so I, I would agree with that.
We don't take no action on it.
Yeah, I, I would, I'd put it on there so to make sure that we don't forget that we need to decide on what method we're going to move forward with, so.
And if we get our answer and we know that we're gonna bring back, put it back in the court for next weekend, that's still good.
Well, thank you.
And I think what I'm going, well, what I'm going to do is I'm not going to call her, I'm gonna put all of this in an email to her. So that way I have it to be able to provide back to the court. And if that's something that I need to put on the agenda for my deal, I'll let Judge put it in now.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, we're adjourned at nine forty two, yeah.